So if I could ask people to come to the front, does anyone have any questions? Would they like to come to the front? Okay. Carol? Question for Clover?
Ms Moore? Ms Moore? I'm singing out loud. Could you please tell me why your local government council... Why did council allow this development to go through all my sun-drenched house? And I went to council about it and it took eighty-six days to get a reply. And that was my once beautiful sunny house. That is question one, I have another quick one. Could you tell me why the people around here get treated differently to the people at Paddington area? I was at council and you were so rude, you turned your back to get a drink of water when friends of Erskineville were speaking on my behalf. And Paddington, they took all the time in the world to give you air kisses and that was fine. And then you asked also friends of Erskineville, "Did they hurry along? You should have been meeting since one o'clock." I think we pay our rates the same as Paddington and I think it is scandalous the way you treat us. And I'll leave that with you, my house, and you should hang your head in chanter. If anyone would like, my phone number's on the back of this.
This is 272 Belmont Street.
272 Belmont Street?
272 Belmont Street. The development was approved under delegation in December last year. Councils were made aware of this approval when we were considering our new planning controls. And we were told that there had been overshadowing caused by development problems with the planning controls. Those planning controls have now been changed.
Yes, the week after.
Have now been changed to ensure that that doesn't happen again.
Yes.
Since the meeting, our director of planning has reviewed your development application and had told councils that it was an unusual circumstance, the approval was consistent with planning controls. The approval required overshadowing issues to be addressed by setting the upper level addition back and deleting the studio over the garage, which is occurring. So the council has legally approved that development and doesn't have the authority to revoke it. However, I understand that the neighbour's written to the CEO and I discussed it with, I thought this might come up tonight, I've discussed it with the CEO and we are going to see how we can minimise the impact.
The only way is the skylights and I don't think I should be responsible. Once it went to council, the very next week you changed the DCP, so could you ever have anything?
I need to really talk to you offline because it's a direct personal issue that I undertake to do.
Well, I've tried to speak to you for three months and I haven't been able to. I know where you live but it's a bit rude to sit outside your house, I'd publicly get...
Well, I told you that it's been legally approved, it's been legally approved and I'm telling you that I will...
Can I just ask people to be respectful and to ask people to, I understand what you're saying, but we have a number of people that would like to ask a question.
I agree. Clover, I know that you've worked really hard in many respects as Lord Mayor but there are things that are profoundly affecting us. One of course is the DA's under delegation. In my area, you've got an apartment block that's going up, seven floors, twenty-six apartments and you've just allocated three all-street car spaces for twenty-seven apartments and nobody in our area can park. Resident permanent space is being lost, that's a big issue, so is the car share. Car shares are taking over our streets and killing business because passing traffic can't stop, there's nowhere to go. So actually, the whole parking issue which we've all spoken about tonight is destroying our lives and our social amenity. I have friends who come for dinner, they drive around for an hour, hour and a half, can't come. Then now on urgent case, they'll get a ninety-nine dollar parking fee. It's a pain in the leg and we love our place but it's miserable. And people are coming and saying, "Look, I don't think we can come back, it's too difficult" if they can't catch a cab. And restaurants are affected and small businesses are affected and really it's killing us.
Thank you. Can I ask that people have a question to ask, which would want us to respond?
No, I might just respond. I want to say, a number of people tonight have said that I hate cars and that's a ridiculous thing to say. But I want to say to you that we can't change the space on our roads and we can't change the space between our buildings. And we know we have to accommodate growth. And we have to try and grapple with this issue of cars and the city. And we need to do it responsibly. Car share is one solution. And I want to say to Robbie, because she writes letters to papers about this all the time, I know what your position on car share is. It takes up one percent of the car parking in our city. And I'd like to tell you, and as I said when I was speaking, it can, one car share space can replace twelve cars on the street. So that reduces car parking, congestion and traffic. I was door knocking in Erskineville and I met someone who said, "Look, I'd really like to thank council because you've really contributed to an improvement in our lives." We moved here, we're a family of five, and we had two cars and it was costing us seven hundred dollars a week. We've got rid of both our cars now and we're using car share and we have saved five hundred dollars a week. Now, this was a resident living in Erskineville who had experienced using car share. I know a number of small businesses are also using car share because it's convenient for them to be able to have access. So car share is one of the ways of us trying to manage the growth, the congestion, the traffic. I talked about what congestion was costing. It's costing four billion a year. If it's business as usual, it'll be eight billion by 2020. And we all know the city is gridlocked and we have serious congestion issues. So what we do is we try, we have tried to, well not tried, we have introduced options. Car share is one and it only takes up one percent of parking. The bike network is another. That's a transport option, not for everyone, perhaps not for some people in this room. But I know that it is for many people in the city because the cycling has increased. Even though we have only done ten percent of our, we've only done ten kilometres of our fifty-five separated kilometre network, it has increased over the last two years by eighty-two percent. That is more than any other city in the world. So people in Sydney are liking that option. Again, it's not for everyone but it is for many. And I know just from moving around the city since I last went up to the state lecture, which was eighteen months ago, there are many, many more bikes in terrace houses, in outside apartments. All the developers are providing cycling now as an end-of-trip facility. They know it's what their employees want. And I've got to say, I was really lobbied by executives working in the city as well as residents living in the city to put in safe, separated cycling because they want to cycle to the office. They don't want to work, do a long day's work and go to the gym at night, they want to cycle to and from work. So they're just some of the issues. So what we're trying to do, and of course we've worked very hard and we have a very effective transport group at council now, and pressured the government in terms of light rail. We've set aside monies for George Street, we hope that'll be the beginning of the network.
Clover, if I could ask you to stop there because we have a number of people asking questions. Thank you.
Joel, I've been living in SBB for twenty-five years. And eleven years ago, I became an old pensioner. And Clover Moore is the only one who gave us more benefit than any other one. And if there are some pensioners here, you know that, that I am telling the truth. She gave us more benefit than anyone.
Thank you, sir, but as I did say, I'd ask if people could find their questions please because we're trying to get answers tonight.
Yeah, look, I'm just a local resident. My first time up in a meeting like this, so I don't understand a lot of things and there's a lot of bigger issues that might go on. But I moved into, started this year, and a small business owner and just have my car, you know, and my little dog. And I've got to work with my car and I have been forced out of, possibly my local area with the parking that's just come in. So I just wanted to know what solutions I've got as a small business owner with photography equipment and having my car which I need to have. There's now no spots for me to park my car.
Are you in the area one of the Alexandria parking?
Yeah, just here.
Okay, well, probably most of the people in this room know that I was here at meetings earlier in the year where you all, many of you were very, very angry about the impact of the ATP on your living amenity because the workers at the ATP were parking in your area and we got a very, very strong request from you to introduce resident parking only and visitor parking. Now, we've consulted with Alexandria and the area immediately around ATP have told us resoundingly, they want us to do that and we have gone ahead and it's been introduced. The group in area two and area three have said no, so we're monitoring that.
So it said no to what?
In case that has impact, no to the resident parking, visitor parking. So we're monitoring it and we're also monitoring the visitor parking and if it's successful, we can introduce that across the city. So you must be in the area, the first area, are you?
I'm requesting a, you know, for small businesses and I don't see why not. There's so much parking, these are photos of the local streets at the moment. There's parking all over the place. And I'm requesting, why should small businesses be not given a parking permit just like residents?
Well, look, I've just really said that we have a really big issue in trying to grapple with parking. We don't give, we only give resident parking stickers. And I'd like to make the point that there have been more resident parking stickers issued across the city than there are actually parking places. So that's the situation we grapple with.
In my photos just there, they show that there's ample parking area now because the, seven people have moved out.
I'd better have a conversation with you because you're talking about a specific issue and I can't respond to that in a general meeting, but I'll talk to you after if you like.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Edward Mann. I've lived in this area for twenty years, so I've seen a huge amount of development. What we've seen is the replacement of industry with big developments for apartment blocks. And we're currently seeing that with the Ashmore estate. That's going to be a big one, there's going to be five thousand residents there. In Green Square, there's going to be eight thousand. Now, you're saying you're going to give a parking space to each of those. What I want to know is how are you going to manage the gridlock that results from all those people using those cars? Whether it's during the day or on the weekend?
I think there's a bit of a common sense approach here. When people move into the inner city, they don't necessarily move in here so that they go and commute for an hour, an hour and a half like people do in the western suburbs. A lot of people just might use their car on the weekend, they might use their kids at school. It doesn't directly correlate to that. Sometimes you've got to try different things. We've gone down this path of having three thousand apartments and we might only give them a thousand parking spots and it's just not working for the community. So I think we need to just try something that's a little bit more sensible. And I think, if you elect me as Lord Mayor, I will get the right ministers and I will fight for the infrastructure for our area. I can assure you that ministers are very passionate about this area. I just don't feel very comfortable coming here, they don't have a relationship with council.
We've been lobbying for an improved bus service into the city for years and years and years and it really hasn't changed in twenty years, I'm afraid to say. Like, it doesn't operate on weekends, hardly, well, three times on Sundays. So, you know, but I didn't hear you mention public transport. The Ashmore precinct is in walking distance of two train stations. But I didn't hear you talk about, you know, kind of lobbying or advocating.
I spoke about my local infrastructure test and I think this is something council should implement. But before there is any of these developments, that we have that test, that we look at what the impact is on bus capacities, we look at what's happening on the train network, not just put a bus, not just put a bike lane in there hoping that will solve the problem and a couple of car share places. And I'm very happy to get Gladys Peri-Jacke to just come out and sit down with you and talk with her. I mean, that's the sort of action that...
Thank you. We'll move on now.
This is a question for Clover, please. Clover, if you are supportive of community input, why are you supposed to ward council representation? And if we had had local councillors, a disenfranchised resident like Kath Carroll from Belmont Street could have sought some sort of hearing into the daylight robbery which the city has allowed on this resident of thirty-five years at Belmont Street. Thank you.
Okay, I did say at the beginning why I didn't support precincts. So I'm really happy to revisit the ward issue. We had a referendum at the last council election and the city community refused to reintroduce the ward system. And I think it's appropriate, I think it's appropriate in the city because we have the global city that's worth a hundred billion to the national economy and we have a number of villages around it. And I think it's absolutely important that every council elected is concerned about the whole city, that we are concerned about the economic activity in the CBD but we're also concerned about each of our villages and the communities in them. And you would know that we do consult and you know that we try and work with all of our communities through our local action plan work. And, look, I am really sorry about what's happening in Belmont Street but I've got to say, it's the only time I can remember something like this happening in eight years and I will do everything I can to try and, to try and come up with a solution on that side. No, and I think it's terrific that as a neighbour you have acted on her behalf and I thank you. Just about getting the glass of water at the committee meeting, you know, those committee meetings start at one and they can go till ten and I've got to say, they are really exhausting and your back starts to ache. And if I get up and get a glass of water, that's the reason why I do it, not because I'm not interested in the people of Alexandria.
Thank you.
My question is to Ms Colton. You were a councillor in the nineteen nineties. In the Daily Telegraph Telegraph for August three, Clover Moore wrote, and I quote, "In the nineteen nineties, the city of city was bankrupt. We saved our money and now we're making it happen, that's responsible government." I heard what you said before, but is that the whole story of the matter?
No, well... Clover has given a wrong impression or given the impression that she brought, her councillors brought the council into the black. That's not the case. It was successive Southall councils and then Turnbull, of which I was a member, that put the council into the black in the nineties and delivered a very strong, rich council for the two thousand and four elections.
I'd just like to, I'd like to have a, make a brief comment on that. In the early nineteen nineties, when I held the balance of power in State Parliament, in fact, Peter McDonald, John Hattan and I were asked to go to the city to talk to Frank Sartor because the city was on the verge of being sacked by Gerry Peacock, the then Love Government Minister. He asked us to support him. He'd just brought in a new general manager, Katie Lay, so that he could turn those finances around. And I support local government and I hate the way the state keeps playing around with local government and the city council. And I, and I said, "Yes, of course, we will support you." And I pay full tribute to the work that he did during that period. But the other thing, and my, the comments taken slightly out of context because I was really saying, I am very aware of how important it is to responsibly manage the finances of the city because of my experience of what happened in the past. And so even though we inherited a council with a very good financial situation, I just want to make the point that the council now is four times the size of the council that Frank Sartor ran and it has five and a half times the number of people because it's been amalgamated with South Sydney, it's been amalgamated with Laika. And they were areas because those councils didn't have the resources that needed a lot of work in terms of provision of facilities. And you must have all, you must all realise that we have put a lot of funding in to the Sydney Park, to all of our parks, I read them out to you, and our community facilities. So, but at the same time, I am really proud that we have a strong financial situation. So we have been able to have a very ambitious capital works programme which we've carried out. And we have set aside monies for future planning, which is what I think responsible government is about. And we have a strong, we are debt free and we have that strong financial situation. That was the point I was making. I do pay tribute to the work that Sartor council did in the nineties.
Thank you.
My name's Robyn and I live in Wyndham Street, the thirty-two years. Now, when my kids were little, we didn't have resident parking, I had a parking garden. But get the train plan now, get the trains out and walk home. Since we've had resident parking, I can park in my street any time of the day I want. And we only had one car then and shame upon shame, we now have three cars between the two of us. Long story. But my question is, things have changed a lot and you have done really well. I've been really pleased with what you've done. But my question is, has anybody thought about what will happen with the traffic when Bunnings opens in McAvoy Street? Any plans put in place?
Yep. I do know where that DA is at. This is councillor Daitone. I'm just not sure where that DA is at.
I'll be, I will say, be here, but in regard to Bunnings Street, I believe that we're waiting for the RMI to come back with their plans in regard to the parking. Council has taken regard into, for entry and exit, I think it's left and left entry. So that we detect, is it Harley Street that's opposite, remember?
That's right.
And in future times when that third street comes through to Green Square, then council will have another...
The first street or is it Green Space?
It's been on the map since the nineties. It's currently a Green Space, it's currently a Green Space down the perimeter of Bunnings development and council has made it that. That's future road dedication and that's been on Green Square plans for, oh geez, when was Green Square being around?
Fifteen years.
You get a different answer every time you ask the question.
Every time we ask a question, we get a different answer. And we've mentioned that at our last committee meeting, in this meeting about that and we've got a different answer as well against you.
I'm saying it is a Green Street now, but it is a dedicated road for when the other roads open up with Green Square and the rural area. And that's somewhere down the track here and that's when council will have a look again at the traffic on that area.
Okay, thank you.
That answers your question. I'm going to be shot for this because I've got a series of comments but I would welcome feedback from the people. Clover, you mentioned the villagers workshop. I had a concern that Alexandria was divided over three villages. I was one of the few who turned up at all three Alexandria meetings. But accordingly, it was fragmented and we didn't get the recognition. Also, when you were talking about the parks and the amenities in the area, ninety percent of what you were talking about was Erskineville, wasn't Alexandria, so a comment. You must visit Sydney Park, do you? I live at this end. I'm the one who loves the parking, like the restrictions. She must love Sydney Park too. Yes. There's great things and there's not so great things.
Keep moving.
Edward, I was really concerned when you said you can't look five years ahead. I actually think any planning and any business needs to be forward looking. And I was also really concerned about your comment that enterprise zones bring infrastructure. Our experience with other big organisational things and giving the technology park as an example, yes, it existed Redfern Station, that's great. We have had no other surrounding infrastructure to support it. We've had problems as a result of that. And therefore, I'm scared stiff of an enterprise zone just up the road because I have no confidence that it will bring infrastructure. We've been looking for an upgrade at Redfern Station for years. We've run the Lift Redfern campaign around this area. And I'm sorry, your comments don't look into the future. You said those, not me. And you're saying, on the other hand, that those sort of things will bring infrastructure. It's in contrast to the green paper for planning. We're not getting that sort of feedback from state government ministers. So that's a real concern, as in a contradiction to what you've said. Angela, you talked about DA's and simplification. It'd be great if we could all understand them easily. I actually just recently attended a course to help me to have that comprehension. However, we've got state planning laws as well as local government planning. It's not that simplistic. The demands and the service of the community you actually do, from my perspective, need a level of complexity and it's tough. But it's not just a basic, simple thing that everyone can understand, in my opinion.
When, when do we get... Joy, I'm looking for a question because otherwise I'm going to actually move on.
I'm looking for comments, the response.
I'm happy to comment.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I'll be okay, thank you. So you're completely right, they are complex but they shouldn't be complicated for the community to understand and that should be the responsibility of council and state government. Challenges are complicated, solutions should be simple and the community deserves plain language that they can understand. And it's great that you attended a course but probably a lot of people don't have that time.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, and you're probably going to be very helpful and a great resource for the community as well. So probably everyone should think about that. But it should be simple and we can't use that excuse that it's language and experts and you have to have a university degree. You need those qualifications to implement and execute but not to communicate with the community. That, that's wrong for any state government or council to use that as an excuse to complicate communications with the community.
Thank you, Angela. Joy, I'm going to give you just one more and then I'm going to ask you the next question.
I know you had two more.
No, not one.
And I'll go to one. Dixie, you were talking about your previous time on city council and your current activities. You mentioned a lot about the CBD and what happened there and you've mentioned your activities in the Elizabeth Bay Kings Cross areas. What's your knowledge, ideas, thoughts in regard to Alexandria or Erskineville?
That's, that's a good question and it raises the issue that I support wards because I'm an independent candidate, I'm not in a party, I live in those areas. I can't, until, or I may not until the election, I can't get to know them, obviously. And I would be kidding myself and kidding you if I understood all the issues that are going on in your community. And that's why we have to have wards.
Thanks for your honesty.
Thank you. Doesn't mean I won't, wouldn't get to the bottom of finding it out either and I'm in the process.
Been very patient, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for coming. I'd like to preface my question by stating that Clover's been mayor for eight years, not twenty-four. She's been out the State League of Parliament for twenty-four. That's just a clarification. I don't necessarily agree with all the policies that Clover has instigated but my question for you David is, what would you do as a Liberal mayor to force Channel Seven to open up a car park for their employees and not to take up car spaces for residents? You're paid as a Liberal philosophy, what would you do?
Thank you.
Can I just ask, what's happening with Channel Seven, mate? They're not letting their own employees in.
They charge three dollars a day and the car park is empty.
So the car park is owned and operated by the Redfern Waterloo Authority or the SMDA, which now is. But the Channel Seven is a tenant of that area.
I've been going to ATP for years because technology's my business. I've never been able to figure out why that twenty dollar charge is there and why all those parking spaces. So it's gone up to thirty.
And then it's also emergency service workers, the anti-strugglers, that has a large base there. Now, thankfully it's not a park or has it not?
It's just totally nonsensical. I mean, the whole point of the ATP in the first place was to get low-rent frustrating technology companies so entrepreneurs could have a sandwich together and figure out how to make things happen. And now it's filled with big companies and multinationals. It's just not the way it was supposed to be. Look, I think it's ridiculous, I'd love to go in there and try and figure that one out.
So how did your reaction, the action, the aim to get the Liberal government, state government, to force Channel Seven to use their car spaces that are there, taking up public land for their employees?
I'll forget the bottom of it. There's got to be a reason, we'll find out that reason, then we'll get some negotiation going, we'll put some pressure on it. I would, I would really like to chant him, eh? I absolutely do like to do it.
Let's just say you could, what would you do? Let's just say that you had a magic wand and you could go and...
I don't think we're magic wand land here, I'm sorry.
I'm not a mayor and I haven't been in council before but I'm really patient about it and I'd like to get a break.
I have permission, I'm candidate for the Public Housing Group. And the reason, I ask, the reason, I don't need it. The reason I ask permission is because I'm very concerned that all the questions and all the points are... The reason I ask permission is because I'm very concerned that all the questions and all the points are going to make a question about this is, seems like the main problem is car parking. I'm working with the people in Redfern Waterloo and the main problem for them is housing. No one makes a particularly public housing. Who of you mentioned public se- uh, housing besides, eh, Dennis? Uh, sorry, you two, sorry. Who mentioned, even someone mentioned that they've got the best team, the best team in the city, representing everything. How many housing commissions are in your team? None. None, none, you two, congratulations. Congratulations, but the policies, the questions for you is very simple. Please, I'm a courier, I'm driving the city, working the city, you can see my uniform. I drive in the city and I'm telling you, I get paid per hour, I don't care. Because if I take ten hours to go from one point to the other point, I don't care, I get paid ten hours. But if you leave, you lose ten hours. And if you keep putting cars in the city, you've got no way to go. Okay? And on top of that, the state government, your state government, is going to make the L four eastward and more cars to the city. More cars to the city and the city's very, I suppose you leave me. It's no way to move cars. So my question is very simple, it's very simple. Where is the humanity in this election that forget about the housing commission? Forget about the need of the housing commission? And where is the response of the council to the residents that for bad luck, for bad luck, has to live in housing commission? Not aware. I expect now that I could to you, if you both can say something about it.
Thank you. Can anyone respond? Okay, I'll go Irene and then I'll go.
I might try standing up and write the problems with my phone. I'm a public housing tenant and I think there are huge problems, um, with the redevelopment of public housing in Redfern and Waterloo. I'm council, I opposed the development of the Glebe Affordable Housing Estate because of the reduction in public housing land. And what we are seeing is the selling off of public housing land to private developers. We are losing all hope of housing the fifty-two thousand people that are sitting on the waiting list. It is a really, really important issue and it's an important issue for this area. Because when they redevelop Redfern and Waterloo, we're going to lose seven hundred housing properties for public housing tenants. That have, that supposedly going to go somewhere within this L G A. Well, as been, I've been a councillor for one term and I've seen how hard it is to get any form of affordable housing put up anywhere in the city. Because residents don't want it. And it's really, really terrible that we sell off what land there is and throw public housing tenants onto the mercy of the state and the residents and the whole system. It is absolutely essential, and I support the housing team here completely, that we protect public housing land. Or else we're going to end up with a city that's no good for anybody except the very wealthy. And some of these public housing tenants have lived there all their lives. They've bought up their families in these zones and they're just thrown away like objects. And it's just appalling. And the Glebe Affordable Housing Estate, I know one person who had a heart attack at eighty when they were moved out of that estate. And this is something that we should all be ashamed of. And we should, this council should be fighting to protect public housing tenants. And I know the Lord Mayor is an advocate for public housing tenants, that we need to do more.
Thank you, Irene. Linda.
Uh, uh, thanks very much for the question. I acknowledge that you're on another ticket, but I think it's a really, really important issue. Uh, the Labor team has two people running who are tenants in public housing, one in Surrey Hills and one in Piemont Ultimo. We too believe it is a critical issue for the inner city. We want to maintain the diversity and totally agree that our public housing communities are some of the strongest communities in the inner city. And we want to maintain them living here and hopefully to grow the affordable housing population in the inner city. I also want to take up your point about being a driver. I've met with the courier drivers down at the Erskineville Depot. We had a great meeting at five o'clock in the morning and, and I, you know, I've listened to them about, um, you know, their concerns about a range of the issues. I mean, I think we also need to acknowledge that Sydney is a place not just for people who live here, but for the millions of people who come and work here. And we have a view that we want to promote local jobs and local employment. We think it's very important and there's a lot of people around the inner city who need jobs, who need skill development and they need investment. Council is one of the few employers in this area where you can come and you can get an apprenticeship or a job. And you don't have to have a university degree to get that. In order to keep the diversity of the city, we believe that council should be an employer with more apprenticeships and for local people to develop their skills. It's better for the area because the people know the area and they know what's needed and they're really, really dedicated workers.
Thanks, Megan. Good luck.
Council supports the apprenticeship program. I just want to say on affordable housing, I have been a very strong advocate for public housing tenants for all of my political life, particularly as a state member. Um, and I'm very al- I have been very alarmed at the systematic running down on maintenance of public housing. And it was only, in fact, some stimulus funding that we got where some work has been done on public housing. There's still a lot of public housing, this is, is, uh, needs at work. I'm concerned about the new government not having a commitment to public housing, um, and, and what the future of public, of social housing will be in the city. The city has a policy of supporting affordable housing, um, that is social housing as well as worker housing. We only have one percent of worker housing, that is people who can rent housing, who work and run these services in the city. Um, and, you know, one of the other speakers said that the city's only overseen sixty, uh, housing units over the last eight years. That's not true. There are nine hundred in, in, either built or in the pipeline. I don't have time to go through where they are, but I can give that information if you wanted. And, um, I just want to say too, that the city council in the past had quite a substantial portfolio of housing, which it gave to the Department of Housing to run because the state runs housing. Notwithstanding that, we have a very strong policy of council of supporting our tenants, maintaining the level of public housing and dramatically increasing, increasing the housing for workers.
Okay, thank you. Um, Angela actually has put her hand up, so. And just want to say too, I'm going to stop the number of questions of the last gentleman there because I think some of us do want to get home at some point. So I'm just going to draw the line at that gentleman at the back there. Thank you, Angela.
I'm also mindful of time and, and, and people and I, I do want to thank you for your question and you're right. I didn't address public housing. I was mindful more of the time perhaps, and that's not an excuse, but we were limited. Um, Living Sydney is going to be dedicating ten percent of funds, uh, council funds from all parking meters. And that will go directly to set up and assist with housing, public housing and crisis care. There is a lot of property that council owns that could also be looked at being redirected for public housing. I don't believe that we should be dumping everything on state government continuously because these are people in our community. And we should take responsibility for the people in our community. And it isn't just about the wealthy and I don't believe that the city of Sydney is going to be overrun by the wealthy. I certainly don't feel like I'm going to be in that category. My day starts at four A M. at work and I'm still going. So it's the regular people in the city of Sydney. I don't believe, um, we have, that we're so badly behaved that we would reject public housing. We require the diversity of our residents. And Irene's been in public housing your whole, most of your adult life?
No, no, about seventeen years.
Seventeen years, okay. So Irene, do you feel hard done by being in public housing?
I think I'm very lucky to be in public housing.
And, and we should expand on that because we are a very lucky council. City of Sydney is the richest council in Australia. It is time to give back and looking after our community is very important.
Thanks, Angela. Dixie just wants to add one last thing and then I'd rather go to the next question.
Without, uh, I absolutely support, uh, public housing. Uh, the inner city, the most rich societies that you can have is having a cross section of people within a community.
Thank you.
You've been very patient, thank you very much.
I'm just going to continue with the theme of bikes and cars. Um, Clover, would you please let me know when you intend to do something about being bikes? Particularly as I said, street that continually ignore traffic signals and create, uh, all sorts of dangers for pedestrians and cars. And my second question is, could you explain why all residents are not eligible for a resident parking scheme? We have a situation where some residents are eligible and some are not. And I don't know why a council will allow it to occur.
Okay, um, in terms of, um, cycling behaviour, I just want to say that the road, the footpath is public domain. It belongs to us all, it doesn't belong to motorists, it doesn't belong to cyclists, it doesn't belong to pedestrians. Belongs to us all and we all need to behave respectfully, whether we're driving, cycling or walking. Um, we run a strong program of street share, um, and that's about, uh, educating cyclists to respect the laws.
Just answer the question, when are you going to take action about bikes that are constantly running the red lights? None of the guff, answer the question.
Well, I can't take action about that because that's a police job. What I can do is educate cyclists about behaving respectfully. And I hope in time, and I hope in time, that will happen.
Now, you're the one that put the bike lanes in there, you desperately wanted them, they're constantly.
Can you have two on the second question?
I've answered that question. Um, the police have to take action about people breaking the law in terms of going through red lights. And we constantly discuss that with them. But what I'd really like to see is a, 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 a culture of, of respecting the law by everyone and respecting each other's space. Okay, so that, that's the bike one. The one on parking, we have discussed quite at length tonight, the fact that, um, there have been more resident parking stickers, um, released to the community than there are in fact spaces on, on the road. Um, and since nineteen ninety-six, there has been a policy that was introduced by South Sydney Council that, um, where, where a developer did not have to put car parking in a development. Um, that I, I believe at the time was about using public transport, it was also about affordable housing. Because every car parking space that goes into a, a development increases the price of the apartment by up to a hundred thousand dollars. So in, you're talking affordable housing, which we've been doing, um, not providing car parking in the building is a way of bringing down cost. And if people do live close to, um, a bus network or a train network, they can walk.
I don't think you've answered my question, why are some residents eligible and some are not?
Those who live in multi-developments that were built after nineteen ninety-six are not eligible, eligible to park on the street because there aren't enough places to accommodate them.
Exactly, so you should have, um, you should really go back to insisting all street parking in these new developments because it's, it's causing too much drama and that's fair enough.
And Robbie, that sounds reasonable, but the fact of the matter is then you have more congestion on the road.
You don't.
Well, you do, if you have more cars.
Okay, go on.
We, we, look, it's a difficult one, we grapple, we can, we try to do it responsibly.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Darren Jenkins, I'm in Malcolm Street in Erskineville. Um, a development that's very close to me is going to be Ashmore Estate. And I know that, um, Lyddie, you were talking about, uh, being an Erskineville resident yourself. What's, what's your view about that development and have there been adequate controls?
Uh, thanks for the question. Um, so as I said earlier, um, the, the Ashmore Estate, we know is currently slated to, to double the population of, of Erskineville. Um, I, I personally think that that is an overdevelopment, um, and, and, you know, have said for, for quite a long time that it, it is a development that is, that is too, too big for the area. And that there is an absolute lack of corresponding infrastructure that is going to be able to accommodate that huge increase in, in people. Um, this is why we want to introduce community developer accords because we think that there is a total lack of process in developing these areas. And, and it's also why I, I personally am very, very concerned about the Liberal moves to, um, to introduce their new planning laws, which totally remove community consultation from these specific developments. I think that's an incredibly worrying thing that many in the community actually are not aware is happening. And, um, and, you know, please tell your friends and neighbours that, that that is what they are proposing. Because it's, it's unacceptable, it's concerning and it will make places like Ashmore even worse.
Thank you, Linda.
Can I just, I just want to say quickly on Ashmore, Ashmore, um, the South Sydney council started talking to the South Sydney community about Ashmore in two thousand and three. It was always identified as an urban renewal site. It's going to accommodate three thousand residents. Um, that will be three thousand of the sixty thousand that Linda's government directed the city to accommodate. And it was Linda's, Linda's, three thousand apartments, sorry. Um, and it was Linda's government, Linda's planning minister, that after that consultation that had gone on from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, um, changed at the stroke of a pen, the development from a nine, six to nine stories, two sites, so two buildings are going to be nine, the others are six, um, to nineteen stories. Um, fortunately Brad Hazard responded to our, our concern about that and has reduced it back to the original area that was agreed to by the community before Tony Kelly stepped in and changed it. So, you know, Linda, it's been, Ashmore has been a real struggle, I've got to say.
Can I just, sorry, can I just just one about here? It's, it's not my government and I.
You don't, you're part. It's Labour party. It's Labour planning minister, Linda.
Lord Mayor, I have said for a long time that I think that that step was inappropriate. And I'm quite happy to say here in public that I don't agree with what the latest Labour state government did in that situation. Quite happy to say that. And I'm quite happy to say that there are other things I don't agree with what Labour governments do and stand up for the local community in the face of those. The other thing I'll say is this, I don't think, and I'm not happy, that Brad Hazard has brought this, this height restriction back because it's still totally unacceptable. It is still a huge development that the community cannot accommodate.
Thank you, Linda.
I'd like to start to Irene and Dennis, how your council would most effectively campaign for better public transport? The trains in Erskineville, hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty percent capacity. How can council campaign the most effectively to the state government for public transport? Irene and Dennis.
I think that the council is already.
It has. Gladys Bell Jickian and Brad Hazard have given an undertaking that public transport will improve as those urban renewal sites proceed. They gave those undertakings in Parliament. And I, and I also, Brad Hazard has been made it quite, quite plain that he wants to work with the city council. He, um, I meet with him regularly. Gladys Bell Jickian has also said she wants to see improved transport. You know, I take people on face value. I think both Gladys Bell Jickian and Brad Hazard are, are two ministers that are responsive and, and are taking our concerns on board. And I think that's really important.
Clover, I. Irene, is there something you might go after that?
I asked Irene and Dennis because I believe that they can most effectively fight hard. So this is what, I want to know exactly what they can do.
I think there's, there's a real issue within the state government between the Department of Infrastructure and Department of Motorways and Department of Transport that is interested in public transport. I've tried to lobby the state government about lift Redfern to get accessibility put into Redfern Station, the eighth largest station in the network, one that is going to grow incredibly over time with all the new development. It was very, very difficult. We put in a ten, ten thousand five hundred signature petition. Um, it's been considered, it will be debated on August third, four thirty. Um, we just have to keep working like that. Um, we have to do community campaigns to demand what we need in those areas. In terms of general infrastructure, I support the light rail completely. I think it's a fantastic alternative that will, that could, you know, lighten things along the area. And I would, like the existing council, continue to support light rail and to lobby for light rail.
Thanks, Dennis.
The, um, the question of transport is really a state matter and we, we would use the resources of the council on, on campaigning. We're used to campaigning, we're used to fighting. We would be, uh, putting on buses, for example, to take them up to Gladys's, um, electoral office from here. Uh, unless we, until we get, until we get the lifts at Redfern, until we get more trains going from Erskineville, we will be, we, we will be hammering them eh, day in and day out until we get what we want. We, uh, we know that the Liberal government is, is, is going to. We know that the Liberal government is going to pretend to do all these things that they promised. I don't take them at face value. We couldn't take the previous Labour government at face value, and we can't take this government at face value. They will let us down unless we keep the pressure up, unless we keep campaigning. And that's how, that's what we think our role is, that we use the resources of council to get in touch with you, not to have pretty snaps of me opening a flower bed, but to have the residents out there campaigning.
Thank you, Dennis.
Don't forget the 308 bus while you're at the station.
I came here tonight to ask one question and get that answered. And most of the candidates gave me the answer, thank you. But Clo, if you wouldn't mind, I would appreciate your answer on this question. It's to do with the parking control, I know we've talked about it a lot. It does come and go, doesn't it? But I wanted to ask, Clo, if you could please indicate your plans, where you can take any changes or to review the parking control guidelines, which currently stand at 0.8 of a space for a two-bedroom unit? If I know where you stand on that, I know what to vote. Thank you.
Our policy is a responsible policy long term for the city, and I have explained the basis of that policy. The draft city plan that's before the government at the moment builds on that work that was done by South Sydney council in the 90s in terms of parking. We have to accommodate growth, and we have to reduce congestion, and we have to manage the situation. And I believe our policy is responsibly doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. My question is, I suppose to Clo because she's the incumbent at the moment, but I've got plenty of time on my hands in Erskineville, and I live in George Street. And we have a car parked down in George Street, near the bottom. It is registered, it's from Victoria, it's been there six months, and the windows are broken. And we're told that nothing can be done because it happens to be owned by somebody. Now, if you parked your car in the city for any length of time, it'd be towed away from you.
So have you got resident parking in your street?
No, no, it's street parking.
So if it's unrestricted parking, and you've got a registered car and you're a legitimate resident, you can park there?
But I mean, it looks obviously abandoned.
But if you could perhaps give me the details of where it is on part of our street?
The other one is on the corner of George Street and Victoria Street, which is an unregistered Victorian car.
Which we could take action on.
Your ranger came around about two weeks ago and took note of it. It's still sitting there.
So can you give me a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you give them to Shaun?
Yeah.
Thank you, and I'll follow it up. Okay.
Very nice, we have. Thank you very much. Once again, I'd like all of you to put your hands together to thank the candidates. Especially, thank you for giving up your time to be with us here tonight. I would also like to let everybody know that there's another one of these tomorrow night, if you want, with tent being run by Red Watch. And that is over in the Patrick Middletown, Central, Redon Street, Waterloo. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming along, and thanks for going to the panel.